I would like to call the Finance Committee meeting for July 15th to order at 6:07. Can I have a roll call, please? Daisy Goodall.
Here.
Rachel Moreno.
Here.
Michael O'Brien. Arthur Perry. Randy Brockway.
Here.
Lisa Gaynor.
Here.
Mary Rose Madyou. Okay. And I do not believe we have any public comment, do we?
None.
Okay, so we will move on to Budget Item C, which is the presentation of the 2014-15 budget. And Mr.?
Thank you.
I am, we'll do it.
Thanks. What's that? All right, today we're here to talk about the preliminary budget presentation for fiscal year 1415. This is a draft budget and is not a tentative budget. The tentative budget will be presented in August. And that'll, during that presentation, I'll explain the fluctuations between budget to actual and explain why I'm in detail, what I'm asking for, and what we're budgeting for, for the year. So our discussion topics are going to be the budget calendar, the key basic assumptions used in preparing the budget, the types of funds, the budgeted expenditures by fund by object, 2014 actual revenues and expenditures, and they're unaudited, 2015 budgeted revenues and expenditures, 2015 budget by object, 2015 budgeted fund balances, the EAV data used for calculating general state aid, and CPI data. Okay, the budget calendar, I didn't realize how small it was going to be. So, we are in the month of July, and we're presenting the draft budget today at the Finance Committee meeting. And then, any questions or discussion topics can be sent to myself or Lisa after this presentation. Just wanted to note a change in August. We are, we added a Finance Committee meeting, and in that meeting, there's going to be a budget presentation in detail by myself explaining the requests that are needed for fiscal year 2015. And at that meeting, or after that meeting, we were looking to have the tentative budget approved to be put on public display beginning August 13th. Has to be on display for 30 days, which would give us the adequate enough time to approve the budget in September and be able to have it delivered to the county and file school code and have it completed by September 30th. So, and that's what you see, so on the, on the second, we also added on the second a committee meeting to present the levy. And what we're looking to do this year, that we didn't do in the previous year, is to pass the levy and the budget at the same time, because they both work well, work with each other, so. In order to know the revenues for the budget, you'll have to know, you'll have to pass the levy. And this way, if the levy passes, our budget numbers are approved. If the levy doesn't pass, we can make the changes to the budget at the time of approval. So there won't be any amendment of the budget in December.
So can I just make a comment? So, if everyone could think about August, because the August 5th meeting, the proposed date for the August 5th meeting is not currently on anyone's radar, except being proposed tonight. So, at the end of the meeting, there's some updates with, with that as a proposed date. I feel that it's important that we have this extra meeting, because depending on the outcome of today, if there's a lot of questions, I wanted to be able to give the board an opportunity to answer those questions before it's, we're under the gun to have to vote. So, if that, I mean, there's flexibility in that date, we just picked it sort of as a place marker, but if everybody could look at their calendars and then give feedback, that would, I would appreciate that. The September meeting is, is already scheduled on the calendar Finance Committee meeting, the September 2nd meeting. So, that's really the only addition.
Okay, in the, the last two items is, in October, the budget must be submitted to the state, and then-
What day?
In October.
August 21st?
October 21st, correct.
Submitted or additional meeting?
No, that just needs to be-
Your question, are you talking about the additional?
I just wanted him to repeat what he said.
Oh, yeah, it just needs to be submitted to the state by October 31st. And then in December-
But you want us to approve the budget in August?
No, the budget has to be approved, the final budget has to be approved by September 30th. And in order to do that, we will have to approve it at the 9/16 meeting.
Okay.
We're looking for the tentative budget to be approved in August.
Well, what's the difference between the tentative and the final? What happens between those times?
If there's any questions or issues raised regarding what I'm requesting for, for the district, if there's concerns, and you don't feel that, for example, if there's a capital project that we're looking to work on in 2015 that the board feels can wait until 2016, at that point, we can make changes to the tentative budget before it becomes final.
Yeah, I'm just kind of wondering what information would come to us?
Well, it's just, I see it, it's just a time for the budget to be exposed, and so, and then we, in September, we actually, we try to make this the final decision on that, as well as with, on the tax levy that will fund for that budget.
Right, and the budget has to be out in the public for 30 days before we vote on it. So it's important that, I mean, to make September 16 an approval happen, it's really got to be out there by August 13th-ish. So, that's why-
So basically, we're providing the 30, 30 days required by law.
Correct.
Well, the August to September is really exposure for us to really kind of, here it is, think about it, you have a month to think about it, think about whatever, you know, tax, talk to people and everything like that, is there anything that we should be, also be thinking about? And at the end of that, it might be exactly the same as the tentative.
Right, but we have to put the tentative out there as part of-
We put it out there, but then we vote on it, and then it still gets exposed.
The tentative, right, the tentative, right, when you approve the tentative, it'll be put on display for the public.
On the website.
Or, or-
Or into the office.
You have a copy in the office before anybody can, to walk in and, so they get 30 days for that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, key budget assumptions for revenue. Consumer price index CPI is projected to be 1.5% for tax year 2014. That's a decrease from last year, last year was 1.7%. And the 1.5% is going to be used to calculate the tax levy, which normally would, I would look for approval in November, but since we're trying to get the budget and levy approved at the same time, it would be September. Now, I contacted the Riverside Treasurer's Office, and they're projecting our EAV to decline again. And they're, they're projecting about 6.1 to 6.2% decline in EAV. Now, the importance of that is, again, when the EAV declines, our rates go up. So now we have approached our cap in the aid fund, the special aid, we're close to approaching the cap in operation and maintenance. And when you approach the cap, that's it, there's, at that rate, at that capped rate, you cannot levy anymore for those funds. You're stuck at that amount for going forward. Next one is student fees are expected to remain flat. They actually increased, our collection of student fees increased over last year. What we did this year is we worked on collecting outstanding fees. We sent out letters to parents, letting them know of outstanding fees, and we just continually sending out letters, and it actually worked, we wound up collecting a fairly amount, a fairly good amount of fees this year.
So, they, your, these revenues are up because your efforts to collection are higher?
Right.
Do you know what that's meant in terms of percentage or dollars?
Dollar amount, we went from 90,000 to almost 140,000.
Okay. And is some of it because of enrollment as well?
Yes.
And what is that, as a percent, 140,000 is a percentage of the total billed amount?
I don't have that percentage right now.
I mean, is it only 75% or is it like 98%?
No, it would be close to like 60, 60, 65%.
Okay.
So, student, so if I'm understanding that correctly, that's, I pay for my child to go to school here X amount of dollars.
Correct.
And you're saying that 60%, we, we've collected from 60% of the population and 40% are delinquent?
Delinquent, or they're free and reduced, where we wouldn't collect anything.
Okay, so a portion of that, we wouldn't collect anyway due to the, to their stature, the other ones are delinquent.
And when I do the tentative budget, and when I show the revenues, the increase in revenues, I have a more detailed explanation.
Is that typical? I mean, six, is it typical that we have that, those issues?
Yes, yeah, collection have, especially the past five years, have been low statewide.
And you can't, I mean, you just have to allow them to come to school even if they-
You, yeah, there's really nothing, the only thing we can do, and you have to wait till the student's in, an eighth grader, is we can prevent them from walking in the ceremony, and that's about it, that's all we can do. We can't hold transcripts, we can't not let them register. Okay, general state aid is budgeted, is expected to, I have it here, we're decreasing by 8%. The reason for the decrease is last year, the payments included fiscal year 12, where we were calculated as a flat grant, when we should have been an alternative method grant. So they had actually made a payment to put us back to alternate method last year, plus what we're supposed to have calculated last year. And that total going forward shows a decrease, because we got that portion from fiscal year 12, that wasn't in there, that's not there this year, which was about 125,000.
So it's akin to like, just an accounting allocation?
Yes, if you take that out, if you take what we received for fiscal year 12 out, we're actually increasing, general state aid is increasing.
Okay.
But because we received a payment, a lump sum payment-
Mm-hmm.
-to make up for the year before-
Right.
-last year, shows an actual decrease.
Can you briefly explain again the difference between the flat and the alternative?
Flat is they take the enrollment times a flat amount, which is about 200, I believe it's 214, something like that. Alternate is the calculation is based on EAV, your average daily attendance, and it's the foundation level, which is about $6,000, $6,119, times a percentage that times your enrollment.
And so we're currently-
Alternate formula.
Alternate, we were flat for a lot, many years, right?
Yes.
Okay.
What drove the conversion?
The biggest driver is EAV, decline in EAV.
And can that change back, depending on, so, so if the EAV changes in the other direction, we could end up going back?
That would be one effect, it could put us back to flat.
Right, and then they could also pass a Senate Bill 16, which changes the whole thing.
Right.
Puts us all foundational, and then makes, has other considerations this way, so.
And the last one is the, oh, federal funds is constant, same as last year. And the last one is real estate, new property growth. Again, I talked to the town Treasurer's Office, and they are expecting, which includes Costco, 2.2 million in new construction.
Wow. That was, as I recall, it was about 400,000 last year?
You know what, they projected 400,000 last year, and it actually wound up at 184,000, so it was less than they, less than they projected.
That's interesting.
The 2.2 is a projection?
Yes.
Is their projection?
Yes, it is.
And who does the projection?
The Riverside Treasurer's Office.
The township?
I think it's the treasurer.
The assessor, right? Yes.
Okay. Do we have any idea of the past, besides last year, has her, has the trend of what they've told us, always been lower than what they've told us? But that didn't sound very-
That I don't know, but, but the new construction has always been, well, in the past, it's been between 1 and 2 million dollars a year, except for the last three years, it took a dip.
Well, I guess I'm just curious if their projections are always, if they give us a projection that's always higher than the actual. And I, and only because I think that, you know, if you're using that in your budget, and then you use that as a hard projection, and it changes, it's to the, to the negative, that's going to hurt us.
Well, I, she was actually more conservative this year, because her projection was actually 2.9 million, but she thought, they knew Costco was going to contest, so-
So she's kind of put that in the-
Yeah, in, into the amount, correct.
The reports are available, I mean, I looked them all up last year, they tell you what they're, over here, Fran would have them.
Well, then why would we have this discrepancy?
Well, no, I mean, projected to actual, I mean, they-
Oh, oh, so we could go back and look at the trend, is what you're saying?
Yeah, it's, yeah, you're right.
No, I, I just would, and then-
But this may be a little bit of an anomaly year, because there's been so much development over at North Riverside, right?
Right.
Well, I mean, even now, because you've got Redrod, I mean, you've got the option to go in and something else.
That goes for next year.
Next year, probably.
This one is, is mostly Costco, and then there was, she mentioned-
Chick-fil-A. Chick-fil-A.
Chick-fil-A, and then she mentioned a home that, a fairly large home that was included.
That should be pretty baked, I would think that she would, they would know pretty well what kind of growth that is, what value-
I think, yeah, I feel very comfortable with the number she gave me this year.
Did you talk to Fran?
Yes, I did. Okay.
Fran, visit us again.
Key budget assumptions for expenditures regarding personnel. Full-time equivalents are expected to increase by 14 for a total of 137 certified staff. And the increase is, we added another pre-K class, so we needed a teacher for that. The six LANSI employees, we went from using the LANSI employees to hiring them within. Two ELL staff, three RTI math, one library specialist, and we have a new fourth grade section that we have to staff for that position. Student-to-teacher ratio is expected to be 12.04. No material changes in administrative FTE.
How does 12.04 compare to years previously?
It's, they're pretty close, they're the same, well, from last year and this year. I believe last year was 12.6, is what I calculated.
Zach, what's the source of this number?
I'm sorry?
What's the source of the 12.04?
What's the source of it? Just to be able to determine how many, how many of our-
No, but I mean, where did you get the data to compute it?
Oh, it's the student enrollment divided by the number of certified staff.
Okay, because it's also published on the, I think, the report card as well?
Yeah, probably, right.
And which might be a couple of years in arrears or something, but I think it's been, all right, I'll-
Yeah, and I'm just doing teacher to student to teacher. Some of those reports will do-
Paraprofessionals included?
And this one, no, but some of those reports will include administrators and other district employees. My, my focus was just on teacher to, student to teacher.
Certified teachers.
Certified teachers, students.
And maybe some of those reports, like for the state, depending on how the district does it, may do it just classroom teachers. So those numbers may be high, they may be looking at classroom teachers, where we, what Zach did here, why the 12.4, so we did all certified, so our psychologists are certified, our social researchers are certified, so every certified.
Yeah, the reason I bring it up is Mrs. Foley used like, I think, 15 to 1 or 16 to 1, and which she pulled off the report card, so, and again, that data would be a couple of years in arrears as well, usually, but at least a year and a half. So, you're using all certified teachers, whereas the report card data?
Some, I'm not sure, I'll have to look at that, I'm saying-
Well, how you report it, I know, yeah, you have choices in how you report it, so you think, okay.
But classrooms plus specials?
Yes, in, in my calculation, yes.
Well, and, and psychologists and social-
Yes, because special.
I guess I don't think of, well, I, I define specials as-
All related services, you know, all special aid related services.
Right, right, all special, yeah, not in terms of special education necessarily, but, but it's, so long as they're certified, which means that they go into the TRS system, pension system, so, right?
And our collective bargaining room.
Yes, yes. But the point is that it's pretty flat, with, with this definition, using this type, this defined ratio, it's been pretty flat, at least for the last-
Slight change, not a significant.
Slight change, 12.6 to 12.04. And remind me, the, the one new fourth grader, is that, that's a net increase of a fourth grade classroom? Is, or is that, is that coming from third, you know, moving up to the fourth grade, and we, now we have, so we have maybe one less third grade class and one more fourth grade class? Is that how, do you know?
No, like, for example, Bligh, like this year, Bligh, there was, or I should say last 12, 13, there was two sections of third grade, but only going into one section of fourth, so we had to hire a fourth grade teacher. But the second grade was only one, so we only had one third grade teacher for this current year.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out whether or not this increase in the fourth grade, for the fourth grade teacher, is offset by a decrease someplace, someplace else?
Not this year.
No.
But we also, we had a decrease at third grade in one of our schools.
Okay.
We lost a section at Central in third grade, so a teacher from Central moved down to second grade. So when you look at the whole dis, you know, teachers move across the district, it's, it's a little bit hard to tell without, I don't know how to attribute that extra fourth grade necessarily to a big increase in student enrollment.
Okay.
Like, I think this specific one you're talking to is the Ames, right?
Ames, correct, yeah.
Yep, this is the Ames one for, like, going forward.
Okay.
So we have three sections of third going into two sections of fourth, so we need to hire, add a fourth grade teacher, but there's still three sections of second, so we're not losing, there's no bubble.
Okay.
Okay, salaries and benefits. Staff salaries are expected to increase 11.28%. Again, the biggest piece of that is the 14 certified staff that will be hired this year. And average raises, when you follow the step and lane spreadsheet in the contract, the increases range from 3.5 to 6%. So, I average 5% for that, and comes close to the 11.28%. And when I do the tentative budget, I'll break out the dollar amount and the percentages for each category. That'll bring us up to what the increase is, what I'm budgeting for, which is the increase.
The 11.28, that's because of the four certified, 14 certified staff, and I'm assuming that's people coming over from, from LANSI?
Six of them from LANSI.
From LANSI, and where are the others coming from? I mean, what do we attribute the increase to?
They're, they're actually new positions, they're actually hired within, or from the district.
So it's like the libraries, this is what you-
The library specialist, the fourth grade-
Before on this page.
Teacher.
The RTI, the ELLs.
Yeah, right, the three RTI, the two ELL.
The two ELL.
But we should see, then, we should see some offset?
You will see the offset in purchase services, where we would have picked up LANSI's amount.
Yeah. You said 11.28 is, it's mostly the 14, or is it?
It's the raises, contract raises, and the additional staff.
Salary.
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 And when I did the, the salaries, when I entered into budget, I actually used actual salaries for fiscal year 15. And for the new staff, I use a placeholder of 60,000. So, as we finalize the new hires, that number could go down, or, no, will go down, depending on what they come in at.
By the number, you mean the 11.28?
The 11.28%, right.
Totally because of the, your proximity, you're putting in 60,000 average?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, I see what you're saying, 60,000 salary average, got it.
Teachers are projected to change lane at an average cost of $40,000. I actually used PMA's number, and they're basing on their experience of what lane change would cost for a district our size.
So they didn't use our data?
They use our data, when they calculated their average, what they thought the increase was going to be.
And you just used that?
And I just used it.
But you said for a district our size?
For district, they gathered our number of staff, and where they were on the, on the stepping lane, and they used that to calculate it, and that's exactly how they calculated all the districts.
So they used our actuals?
Our actual, using the formula they use for all districts.
Okay.
Years of service payment for retirees are expected to be approximately $40,000. We have a number of staff that have retired and are entitled to, based on the contract, of the years of service payment.
So, I can't remember, is that a one-time payment?
It's a one-time, yeah.
And it flows into benefits or salaries, when you look at the breakout behind?
It flows into benefits.
That's what I thought, okay.
And what was the formula? I know we just talked about this, the formula for, yeah, for, to calculate the years of service, and it's like, times some dollar amount, right?
$600 times years of service.
600 what?
$600.
Dollars.
Per year of service, and I presume that's per year of service in the district, I don't know, I'd have to look.
Yes.
Yes, in the district.
Health insurance costs are expected to increase 11%, we actually had that percentage given to us two weeks ago. I spoke with our broker, and I told him that that was too high, if they can negotiate a better percentage. Yesterday, they came back with a 8% increase, so you'll see that health insurance costs decrease a little bit, what I presented here.
All right, it, they're expected to increase to 11%, 11% of what?
11% from last year.
Well, then what is increase of 5.6?
Five, last year, our percentage was 5.38. So we have an increase in additional, from 5.38 to 11% is a 5.72% increase.
Okay.
I didn't follow that.
The increases, this, health insurance costs are going to increase to 11%. The actual increase is 5.72%.
Okay, the percentage, okay, so it's going to, it's 11% of?
It's 11% total.
Of the total budget?
Of the total salary and benefits.
Of total salary benefits.
Benefits number.
But it's actually going to be closer to 2.7%.
Right, because of the-
What was that?
Because it's actually going to be, going to be closer to like 2.7%. Because that's going to be, 11% is going to actually go to 8%.
Right.
So the increase, okay.
It's, so they're expected to increase to, let's just use the numbers written here, 11%.
Of salary and benefits.
Of, so if I were to take the total salary and benefits number, 11, and the benefits would be, including healthcare costs, and I would multiply that by 11%- Including healthcare costs, and I would multiply that by eleven percent, that would be.
Health healthcare cost.
That would be healthcare cost.
Wrong number, I mean.
Yeah, no, I I'm, yeah, I know.
Right now, what you have in there is five point seven two percent higher than was last.
Yeah, I'm just trying to know what the denominator is, or the, you know, that's, okay, so it's of total salary and benefits.
And and you're thinking we're gonna get a lower number, they just went out and got more competitive bids, or is it with the same insurance?
Same insurance broker, they went through Blue Cross Blue Shield, they went back and said that our district is is.
Look at our experience again, our claims experience and.
They feel, we feel that the eleven percent is too high, we haven't paid that high of a rate percentage in in years. And they came back and they came back with a lower rate.
Are they doing, are are teachers doing things like, like I know for our corporate, we have to go into this, we we participate in these wellness plans and all that. And that's how we got a lower rate, we ha- we have that here too as well. Bill's saying, I don't know.
Last year we did, and we'll we'll have it in the fall this year.
Yeah.
We can get vaccinations and stuff as well.
We're gonna do it at the same time with the va- vaccinations, because you get a better turnout.
And that's all part of, you know, they want, they're promoting, that's how, and that's how we get the lower rate, right, if we have that participation.
I I think.
That's correct, yeah.
Well, the thought process is then we'll have more well people, and then we'll be less payout, right?
Right, yeah.
I was just gonna say, as we look ahead to like the next contract, one of the things we can look at is maybe more other options. Like right now, we're locked into Blue Cross Blue Shield PPO, because that's what is, you know, in the contract. But if we look out, you know, when we start negotiating, we can look at other healthcare providers.
Okay, key budget assumptions for purchase services, buildings and grounds and repair work are expected of budgeting five hundred and eighty-eight thousand.
Can I ask, just go back with one question? Is the dental tied to the health insurance, or is it a different?
No, dental is separate. Nine percent.
Is that negotiable at all lower?
I'm working on that one too. Here's a list of projects that we know the district needs to have completed before the end of the school year next year, or the end of fiscal year. Our parking lot pavement, we need to resurface all the parking lots at all buildings. The quote, we received the quote, just to get an idea of what it was gonna cost, is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That I believe that will not fall under li- life safety, I think that's hard, that's hard to.
What, a parking lot?
Yeah, a resurfacing of a parking lot is very difficult to get through as a life safety project. We had the roof repair work for Hauser that goes into fiscal year two thousand and fifteen. Total cost of that was, it's gonna fall about a hundred thirty thousand. We have building maintenance work district wide, provided a spreadsheet of the capital expenditure projects that are out there. Totaled about a hundred and fifty thousand.
That's this summer or next summer?
This summer.
This summer, okay, so I mean.
And some of it will fall into.
Most of it's being executed this summer.
Correct, like the talk pointing and the nurse's office and the teachers' lounge. And life safety work, we have roof repair work at Blythe that I would like to have completed in June of two thousand and fifteen. And then the last one is landscaping work, and that is to re-side the uh the fields behind Hauser.
Where is it?
The fields behind.
Oh, okay.
The whole thing?
Nine thousand square feet.
Well, I saw it in the other piece, but I didn't know if.
It's alm- it's about three quarters of it.
But just doing three quarters of the field, is that what you said?
Yes, yeah.
You wouldn't just do the whole thing?
We we could do the whole.
Just like you're almost there, doesn't it look kinda odd that you?
Some spots are, some spots are, the grass is actually very healthy, other spots is it's just weed and dirt. But, yeah, I mean.
I guess it's it's probably a charge per foot, per foot, right? The yard of dirt, and you save a couple of yards of sod and whatever.
I can go back and ask them to do the whole thing.
That's, you know, that makes sense.
Risk of, I mean, part of the reason that there's need to do this is that it's not all even and potentially there could be some injury.
That is, that is, yes, that is correct.
So that's part of it, is that we're gonna level it out, we're gonna actually take out the big potholes that kids fall in and we can't find for days.
Other purchase services, workers' compensation insurance is expected to increase five percent, so is property casualty insurance.
Let me ask this, does property casualty insurance include directors and officers?
Yes, it does, yes, it does. Continuing with the key budget assumptions for capital outlay, I know we discussed this earlier in the year, security cameras. Our estimates were between fifty-five and seventy-five, so I used a median of sixty-five thousand for cameras. And no other material changes.
And that's your, just your, sixty-five thousand is just your your estimate, or do you actually have quotes?
We have quotes.
Have we seen those quotes?
Yes.
Have we actually saw the details of the quotes?
I think the decision.
Yeah, we talked about, you know, once we have a architect, that we'll have them do a complete assessment of all the buildings, and that can be part of the project.
Yeah, yeah, so maybe that should be just a part of.
A five-year review.
Yeah, the five-year review.
Yeah, facility review.
Yeah, and it may fall right under life safety. That services, we're continuing to pay our our debt, our bonds.
On the, one quote on, question on the parking lot, is two hundred and fifty thousand, that's. Are we getting quotes for the whole, the whole, the whole thing?
Yes, now that is assuming that they're gonna be able to grind the top, the top layer.
And that's it, they don't have to go any further and.
When they did the handicap spots, in the location, they did the handicap spots, they said the footing was okay. So the ground underneath was fine.
But that's only here.
That's only here, yes.
Ames might be another story or how.
True.
True, yeah, okay.
Okay, our district funds, the restricted funds are debt service, IMRF, capital projects, working cash and fire safety. Unrestricted education, O and M in transportation. Here is our two thousand and fifteen budget number compared to two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and thirteen actual. Explain the increase in salaries, like I said, the majority of it is gonna be due to increase in staff. And contract raises. And the benefits, the majority of the increase is due to the increase in insurance costs. And also, I, when I did the benefits, I went under the assumption with with that the new hires are all gonna have. Family insurance, because I I don't know who's gonna have single, and I don't know who's gonna have. Family, I also went with the assumption of, not the assumption, we're also hiring potentially eighteen. Full-time parapros that, we're bringing in full-time parapros from part-time, so it may be eighteen more. Full-time that are gonna be insured, now that's a high number, it could be less than eighteen, it could be ten more full-time that we hire. But I used eighteen, and I, again, I use the family coverage for insurance.
So just another area where we could see it come down, when the actuals come in.
Right, when the actuals come in, right, you can have some staff that come in that will not have insurance, or will have single.
Explain to me about hiring eighteen full-time parapros, have we had part-time in the past, or?
We've had part-time in the past, and we have, I believe, thirty.
Nine.
Thirty-nine part-time, and they would split their days, so you'd have a morning parapro. A part-time morning parapro for one IEP student, and then that same student would get a different afternoon parapro. To improve a learning process, felt it would be better to have one parapro with a student all day. So there's no disruption in.
And I believe we discussed that when we riffed the, all the parapros, the thought process that was presented was that we would bring back. Those that were coming back would come back full-time.
Right, right.
And if I could, if I could just clarify that, it's, that's exactly what we're talking about, is bringing back, not hiring new parapros.
Right, around that, right.
Some of the parapros that were going to be essentially.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Yeah, if we, what this process would, what we do in this process is, we wouldn't be hiring quote new paraprofessionals, we'd be bringing back. The paraprofessionals that we we ripped based on the senior, so we'd be bringing back paraprofessionals that were already working on our district.
So.
So in theory, we kind of converted thirty-nine part-timers into eighteen.
And again, I'll, I guess I'll have to go back and look at some of the exhibits that were presented, but I have to assume this is more expensive because of the benefit issue?
Yes, yes, it is.
But again, the belief was that we're providing a better quality service, right?
Yeah, I I understand, and I I agree with that, you know, I agree with that, I just wanna make sure I understand it, that's all.
Purchase services, you can see the decrease in purchase services from actual to budget. That, I pulled out the LANSI portion, because purchase services, two point four million of purchase services is related to special ed. Contractor services, and that's off-campus, LANSI and so forth, so you see the decrease in purchase services. I did pull out the the LANSI portion.
Excuse me a second, I I see that we have a lot more on the agenda here for the finance committee.
No, not really, we have this and we have.
Okay, so we're gonna be.
And that's pretty much it.
Well, we only have until seven thirty, so.
We're gonna be okay till seven thirty.
Yeah.
I thought, seems like we were spending a lot of time on a draft budget that if we had other.
I I think it's worth the this discussion, so I would like to continue down that road.
Okay, next one, you see an increase in supplies and capital outlay, and mentioning together is because you're gonna see. An increase in spending regarding technology, we haven't really purchased any. Infrastructure technology in the the past year, most of the purchases for technology were related to the laptops and iPads and so forth. So we have a lot of outdated equipment that needs to be changed and. In the August budget presentation, we'll list out exactly what purchases are gonna be made and what the costs are.
So the increase in technology costs, are they all going into capital outlay, or some of it going to supplies?
Some of it goes into supplies.
Can you break down, you distinguish what goes into capital outlay versus what goes in supplies?
Capital outlay is anything over any equipment, over five thousand dollars should be put under capital outlay. Now, it could be individually, or it could be in in aggregate, so if you have computers at fifty computers. At a hundred dollars, you can put that under capital outlay, because it's a five thousand total.
So Zach, in comparison to last year at this time, when we spent four hundred and fifty thousand dollars on on laptops. What, where are we at this year?
Well, we are, although a decision hasn't been made of what direction we're gonna go with, if we're gonna stay with. The Apple computers, or we're gonna go with Chromebooks, we actually budget for, Don and myself, we are budgeted for Chromebooks. Well, Chromebooks or another type of laptop, whether it be HP or or.
And what, what is that number?
That number would be about three hundred fifty.
About three hundred fifty?
Yeah, for for each device.
And that would.
As compared to a thousand dollars.
Oh, for each device, I'm looking for a total of.
The total is, it was about a hundred thousand, close to a hundred thousand.
Compared to four fifty of of last year.
Four fifty of last year, correct.
And what's, what what are you thinking the plan is in converting over to Chrome, is it just one grade at a time? As you know, as the new grades come in, we, or is it just?
It's gonna be one grade at a time, because what we're do- we are now going through a fi- a fi- fifth year. Use of of the computer, of the Macs, which is probably gonna result in us having higher maintenance costs. Because. Right, you don't think we can go six years, so. The least we would do would be the one year, but we would, I was talking to Don, we'd like to do two grades and not one grade. But, I mean, if that's what.
So that's the assumption under, with these numbers, right, is two two?
No, this is actually one grade.
One grade, and then I'm assuming Don at some point's gonna come to us with his philosophy on where he wants to go with that.
All right, so in supplies, that's where the. The one-to-one equipment is, right, is in supplies?
Supplies and it's in capital outlay.
Okay, and then what what about infrastructure?
Infrastructure, we haven't spent a whole lot on infrastructure in fiscal year fourteen. For fiscal year fifteen, it's in capital outlay.
All right, so.
I don't think, did you get your answer on difference between capital outlay and supplies?
Yes, yes, it was the value of.
It's just the value, right, okay, I'm sorry.
Well, but is it a bulk purchase or an individual?
It could be either or.
Okay, and then what have we, or has there been a budget amount, let's say over the past five years for infrastructure?
I can tell you what the budgeted amount was for technology, which includes salary and benefits.
Not, no, I'm interested in equipment.
Equipment, oh, I can back into it.
Equipment or infrastructure?
Infrastructure, it it will.
I don't see a laptop as infrastructure.
No, I don't either, so I'm looking for infrastructure.
It would be, in the past, it would be less than a hundred thousand that was spent.
You're looking for.
Not not what was spent, what was budgeted.
Less than a hundred thousand was budgeted.
All right, so so basically, we haven't, we haven't been providing for infrastructure supplies. And this year, we're providing for how much about roughly? Not related to salaries.
We're looking at almost.
Or or laptops, right, you're just talking like.
Strictly infrastructure.
Servers and stuff.
Three fifty to four hundred thousand.
So when we're talking.
Backup systems.
When we're talking about infrastructure, we're talking about computer.
Email servers.
Yeah, I, in the, you know, we're being filmed by the public here, when people hear infrastructure. They also think of utilities and.
No, that's why we're getting clarification.
Yeah, well, I I just think it's important that we we do clarify this.
In the August presentation, we'll list out exactly what.
Yeah, and I I'm specifically asking about technology infrastructure.
Yeah, I mean, that'd be helpful to get that kind of breakdown of that budget, especially with with everything related to technology. How much are we looking for with with laptops, whether it's Google Chrome or whatever? Or with how much for the email server, the new email servers, the new data, back- backup systems, the, you know.
So if you took the three hundred and fifty thousand for infrastructure, break that up and say, what does that three hundred and fifty thousand represent?
Right.
Yeah, what is it buying?
Right.
And and I think, you know, and the point, I guess I'm driving that, is that it, you know, we haven't had virtually nothing over the past few years. For equipment, I mean, we spent some money on salaries and.
And devices and.
Devices and things like that, but.
And we just spent it, because there was big bunk, bank of money, so let's just, you know.
Well, we spent a lot on the on the laptops.
Right, right, and what I'm saying is that there wasn't, we, it wasn't, it was paid out of. There was no payout of a specific budget, laptop budget, you know, which is a big bank of money, account of money.
It's been, it's a lot of money, though.
Yeah, so so we wanna do better, we wanna be a little more transparent and accountable.
I just wanna understand it. I just wanna understand it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right. If you look at, uh, the next one is operation and maintenance, uh, the biggest increase you're gonna see is in purchase services, and that is gonna be, the majority of those costs are gonna be the costs that we talked about, the five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, uh, the, uh, parking lot, uh, the roof projects and so forth. So that would be both in, in, uh, purchase services and some capital outlay.
But, are you, you're talking about the increase?
Yes.
Is mainly for the parking lot and, and?
The five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, the slide before, we listed out all the costs that were gonna come out of.
And what's the rest of purchase services then?
It would be maintaining, uh, the, our boilers and, uh, chillers and, uh, regular routine maintenance.
Okay, see, I went out.
Okay. Are those based on service agreements or are they just based upon?
Some of them are service agreements, yes, and some of them are just, uh, cost of, uh, normal cost of services to come out. I would expect things like the chiller, in order to keep its warranty intact, you need to have this regular maintenance. Right.
So where are we at?
Did somebody ask about the increase in capital outlay from zero, or I don't know?
We didn't spend anything last year, we actually budgeted, uh, ninety thousand last year, um, I budgeted a hundred thousand for, um, any equipment that would possibly need to be purchased, um, I'd like to again talk about possibly purchasing another truck.
So that's like, what, it's, it's that trucks or copying anything that's asset, like.
Correct.
Copy machines and that kind of, if we own them, that would go on to.
That would go onto their, correct.
Outlays, right?
Right.
Okay.
Debt service?
I just want to go back to the ed fund a little bit, and, um, again, purchase services, do we have a breakdown of what the two point seven, or, or will we get it at some point?
We will, um, if you look at la- last year of the three point three million, two point four million of that was, uh, special ed.
Okay.
And there's professional development in there, um.
In the August presentation, those, that detail of what rolls up to purchase services will be.
Correct.
Detailed to all of us.
Yes.
Okay.
That's our debt payment for next year, that concludes principal and interest. Our transportation cost, uh, projected to be increased, uh, seven hundred fifty-eight thousand. That's surprising, why's that? Well, we went through and, um, we, uh, looked at. Oh, the actual, yeah, cause. Actual, yeah, we looked at actual. We brought that down, right. We brought it down, we actually thought it was gonna be, based on August numbers, we were gonna hit, uh. Eight hundred? Eight hundred and sixty thousand. Yeah. Now they cleaned it up and, uh, now we're providing transportation to those who need the transportation and are required to have transportation. So I anticipate there's gonna be some additional, uh, increasing costs. Because I, you know, I thought we had, we had fewer students gonna be placed out of district too. We were gonna do better at con- uh, consolidating the, the purchasing for buses for field trips, right, that was gonna. Right. And I'll actually have a better idea what that number is gonna be at the end of July. Okay.
So you're anticipating that'll go up, down, or?
I don't anticipate it going more than seven hundred fifty-eight thousand.
Over what's here, so it could potentially.
Come down. IMRF, it's an increase in about fifty thousand each year, so again, it's increased approximately fifty thousand, um. There's our, uh, capital projects, uh, fund, there's a couple of projects that still can, um, be taken out of our capital projects that we're looking at possibly doing, and that would be, uh, refinishing the, uh, stage floors at, uh, Hollywood and Blight.
You said take out, you mean that, they're in here now, but we don't necessarily have to do that, okay.
Like, yeah, be able to, right, cause there's still construction-related costs. And even the, the cameras that I talked about could be taken out of here too. So those are just placeholder holders, if, if we choose to take it out of capital projects, or if we choose to use, um, operation and maintenance, uh, money instead. Here's our actual revenues and expenditures, uh, and fund balance for two thousand fourteen, these are unaudited numbers, but here's where we, uh, wind up falling at the end of June. You can see the operating funds, we went down from twenty-eight point four million to tw- to twenty-five, uh, million. Big chunk of that was the transfers of, uh, money from education fund and O N M fund to capital projects to fund the remaining portion of the construction project. And you can see overall, our total fund balance decreased two point, uh, almost two point two million, and that's a trend that's gonna continue going forward. Here's our, uh, chart of how fund, uh, revenues compared to expenditures, and debt service and capital projects, you can see are the only ones that expenditures exceed the revenues. And those are due to, uh, transfers, uh, used to pay those, paid a debt came from education fund, we don't levy for debt service, and we don't levy for capital projects, so those funds came from, uh, education and operation maintenance. And here's our budgeted revenues, expenditures and fund balance by fund for two thousand fifteen, we're looking at an overall decrease, again, of about two point one five million. And you can see our expenditures are now exceeding our revenues for ed fund, and I'm for tort, but I'm doing that to pay down tort, um. And the reason, uh, ed fund is decreasing, uh, the expenses are higher than revenue, is because our, we did not levy for property taxes last year. So we lost out on approximately four hundred thousand of revenue, and that, that second half of the payments that are we're gonna receive in the fall are still gonna reflect, uh, a zero increase, so. Our revenues are gonna be less than they were last year.
So Zach, I see you, you kind of put a point on that, uh, where, uh, where have we, um, where have you made progress in, in saving money, uh, from last year to this year, in, in realizing savings?
Well.
To, to make up for some of that loss of revenue?
Uh, quite a bit in supplies, um, transportation was the, was the big one, and, uh, again, in the August, uh, presentation, I'll show where we, uh, exceeded our budget and where we saved, we've came under budget.
Yeah, I'd be looking, I'd be looking for you to put some points on that as well.
And, and I would, yep, Aunt Randy, those are great questions, and I would be looking to understand where we did something positive to actually impact the number. Uh, by that, I mean, um, if we over-budgeted, you know, I wouldn't consider that a savings.
Sure.
I mean, where we actually took some affirmative action, and I know you've done some things with supplies and, but you think, you know, of, you know, but if we, uh, or we just failed to spend something that we're gonna spend next year, that, but I mean, where we've really had some real impact on.
So actua- more actuals to actuals, not budget to actual.
Correct, because part of this is we want to also look at our, you know, how accurate we are in budgeting, I, you know, as well. Um, I mean, I, I like contingencies, but I would like them to be identified as such, rather than just, you know, having a buffer that we, we don't know what it is.
Yeah, that said though, uh, we, we know that there's, there's gonna be some challenges, because there were some expenses that were delayed in being, um, realized from when, when we went, when, when we had, uh, the switch over to the new administration.
Yep, and.
You know, and so that mess, that kind of messes up the.
Yeah, there was, I know some, uh, are, now are we?
Yeah, the trend, yeah.
Are we through that now, pretty much?
Yeah, starting in July, we're, we are.
Alright.
Starting with this year, yeah, this year, we should be good.
But you have a bump in some areas, that's not really a fair comparison from.
Well, that I just.
But we just need to note it.
We're, we're looking for trends here.
Yeah, exactly.
Bigger trends.
Actually, we know, we, we have to get to fiscal, fiscal year fifteen to have a clean baseline, because fiscal year fourteen, this closing, this past closing year still has some expenses that were really for fiscal year thirteen.
Thirteen, right.
Going, beginning in July, it would be a clean, we'll start. This is our first clean baseline.
But as I understand it, those, those were not salary or benefits, which is, again, eighty percent of.
Right, no, there would be supplies, purchase services.
You could probably figure out, ascertain exactly the amount that carried over from the last budget year, so to offset what we have.
Right, we have to kind of do that work, yeah.
But, but I think it's important to note that they weren't salary and benefits, and that's the bulk of everything we do.
Right, well, we know a lot of that salary and benefits, a lot of things were happening, you know, twelve months ago.
Yeah, well, that's true too, that they present their own challenges with comparisms.
This is just a chart of the same information. Here's our revenue budget, and you can see, uh, first line is the property taxes, two thousand thirteen, fourteen is higher for two reasons. We had less, uh, tax appeals, we didn't have the big tax appeal that was, uh, done the year before, and also, half of that, uh, revenue received was based on a three percent CPI, and the other half was a one point, uh, one point five, uh, seven percent. I'm sorry, zero percent, and then, the two thousand fifteen half of it's gonna be zero, and the other half is gonna be, um, one point five. Well, that should be more than one point five, because we have new construction, well, it's closer to two point, two point one percent is what, two to two point one percent. Okay. Oh, the only other one thing I want to mention is the state grants, um, from the categoricals, our, our major categoricals, which are, uh, s- transportation, special ed transportation, uh, special ed, uh, facility, uh, per, personnel and so forth, the big chunk, the state actually paid all payments, they're actually caught up. They made the payment in June and it was caught in Ju- captured in June.
Thanks, it's, yeah, temper, that's almost ten percent, it's a big number.
Yeah, so, right, I mean, you can see, so next, uh, next year, for fiscal year fifteen, I'm budgeting that we're gonna receive all four payments.
Oh.
And that would be, um, about how, how, what percent of the budget?
That the, uh, the state grants is gonna be?
Yeah.
Looks like the ball. Almost ten percent, is it? Almost ten percent?
Well, first of all, when you say percent of funds, I'm assuming that's.
Except for the actual or the budget?
For the actu- for, uh, an actual, right?
No, that's, that's budget. That'd be the budget.
So this would be the budgeted for twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen?
Yes. Just coming in.
Well.
Yeah, there is, I'm sorry, nine point four, yeah. Yeah, I was, I was trying to add it in my head.
I'm sorry.
Trying to impress us, you know? Uh, that percent of funds is what each category is to the total, the percentage of each category to total.
Alright, so.
So property taxes is eighty-six percent of total revenue received, and then the state grants is nine point four, oh, four percent.
Of the twenty-one million.
Of the twenty-four million.
Alright, I, I guess I'm a little confused on the state grants, um, so you're projecting, again, that we're gonna get nine point four percent? For twenty.
No, nine point four percent is the whole, of the pie.
No. We're gonna get. We're gonna get, we're expecting two point two million, and it happens to represent nine percent of the total budget amount.
Right, for twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen, for the, the twenty fourteen fiscal year and the twenty fifteen, right?
No, just the twenty fifteen budget. Which is the fiscal year twenty fifteen.
Right.
The fiscal year is always represented, the year is always represented by the end year.
Right, alright, I, I guess what's confusing me a little bit is you said it was nine point, or, or I understood, maybe I'm understanding wrong, that it was, it's nine point oh four percent because the state paid all of its payments.
No, it's, yeah, right, so I'm, I'm.
But that would, but that, we don't know what they're gonna give us next year, we know what they've given us.
Since they've caught up, I'm going under the assumption that we're gonna get four, four payments, they actually made five this year, for, I mean, they made five for two thousand, fiscal year two thousand fourteen. They, we were due one payment for two thousand thirteen, which they made, and then they made all four payments for two thousand fourteen.
Okay.
The way it's been done in the past, they either paid two from the prior year and two from the current year, or one from the prior year and three from the current year. They always made four payments, they made five payments this year.
Okay.
So now we won't see any fi- more five payments, because they'll be caught up hopefully. And here's our expenditures for all funds. So it says salary and benefits, six, sixty-seven percent.
Right.
Any questions on, I mean, we went through. Yeah. Reasons for the increase and differences. Here's our E A V since two thousand six, you can see the graph, how it increased, then now we're on a, uh, on a decline, and we're gonna continue to decline in two thousand fourteen, probably level off two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, and start seeing a, uh, slight increase going forward. We don't get any value for air pollution? No, we do not. Here's CPI, since two thousand two, see it's not consistent, again, for two thousand fourteen, CPI is one point five, but if you factor in, um, the increase with capturing new construction, we're looking at two point one, two, uh, two percent to two point one percent, uh, levy. That's it.
Okay, so the, the, uh, next steps are if there, as everyone digests what Zach just presented to us, if there's questions, we would like you to forward them to Zach and myself by, um, the twenty-fifth if possible, so that we could answer those questions, bring the answers to those questions back to the early August meeting, once that date is set. Um, and at that point, in, in early August, Zach will be bringing to us detail, the details of all the numbers that you saw today. Right?
Similar to what I did last year, so if I, if we had an actual number of a hundred thousand, you know, budgeting a hundred fifty, I'm gonna show what makes up that fifty thousand.
Okay.
Okay, so that finishes off the, uh, budget planning process update presentation, and then there's four, um, there's some management reports that were also attached, and Zach, if you would like to talk to those, um, I'll be good. And remember, these are follow-ups from a request that was made, that we've been talking about for the last couple of months, so this is the outtake of that. So this is the outtake of that.
Zach, if you'd like, you can look at a hard copy. This is the substitute teacher expenditures.
On the substitute teacher expenditures, what I did was I did a summary of each building by grade. And there's specials and two and there's floating substitutes. Calculated the number of days by the rate, come up with a total, a number of days and a total amount that we spent in fiscal year fourteen for substitute teachers.
Okay, but it's not exactly what I'm looking for.
You were looking for reasons for.
I'm looking for that and I'm looking for trends. I want to compare it to prior years, what's been going, you know, in other words, we're, I'm looking for trends. I had printed out what we requested and it was in the May. I printed it out and all of a sudden I don't have it, but it was in the May finance committee meeting. And, and the other thing was that I actually took your original raw data report and I just did some quick pivot tables on them. So that, you know, so here it is by, you know, on one page I can see it by school. And again, I think maybe some of the raw data could maybe use some recoding or something. But here it is by school on a month, I think by grade. And I was able to, you know, again, run a report by month. But we're trying to understand what the reason is, and again, to be meaningful, we would, I would have to know how many teachers we have per school because it would be, you know, you know, what percentage of our, right? In other words, it has to be, you have to relate the numbers to something to be able to get any insight from them. I mean, the costs are one thing and that, that's a good number to have. But have, you know, I, I understand that things have really been going up the last couple of years. Not just this year, but last year, they, they were, so I'm looking for the trends.
Yeah. The, the first two pages are pretty clear to me. You know, number of hours per school and per grade and so forth. Of course, some of those numbers stick out and, and it's, I take it later that, or see on page three and four that some of that's due to family leave. It's like the page, maybe three, four and five there that I don't quite understand what those numbers and those columns are. What they mean.
I think they were, should have been all on one page. In other words, they should have been five columns across rather than three, what are they, three and two?
Right, I think it's formatting and put it on board focuses.
So what, what do they mean? I mean, what, what are these?
So those are totals.
I thought those were the cost per day, right?
Cost per day.
Times the number of.
Number of days in that week.
So would it be helpful if we reformatted into a chart that lays it next to each other and then send it on out?
Yeah, yeah, you need to reform.
Yeah, but, but also the raw, I, I mean, it looks like somebody just retyped the totals, right? I mean, are you able to do pivot reports off of the raw data?
Yeah, let's give, let's do it in Excel.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I mean, I, and, and I don't know, you're probably not able to code a reason in there.
That is, yeah, quoting a reason, it was a difficult part. And also, A S O P is what we use. I think there's a restriction on getting prior year information too. So I'll look into if there's another way of pulling.
I mean, and.
As you said, you wanted to see a comparison of this, the year here with the prior year.
Yeah, the prior year and maybe even one prior, if, if at all possible, I've heard.
I, I think there's a restriction, I was told, but I'll contact A S O P and see if they, if there's a way of extracting.
But even, so if there is a restriction, we just, we would like a format that's cleaned up so that we can at least understand this year and then add to the, this year, next year, as we go forward to start a trend now.
Right.
Is that right? I mean, yes, we could, but if we can. Right. Understand where we are and how we got there, that would, if, if we can get it. And then the other thing I would, another way of getting at it is, do we know sick day, you know, how many sick days we've had? Or, or, you know, in other words, off of personnel reports, isn't, isn't that another way of getting at it or something?
I can gather the sick days. You know, it would be, be good to me to, to, to know how many of these days are not family leave days, but are actually sick days or days in training, you know, pulled out for training. That would, you know, the family leave days seem to kind of like throw a, a big, you know, kind of muddies the water.
Well, we always have people on family, F M L A.
Just to figure out what the breakdown is.
But I think the breakdown.
What they're attributed to.
Yeah, because ultimately what we want to do is, at least I, I expect this to be tied with what we're budgeting for the, for, for this upcoming school year for, for substitutes.
Yeah, that is.
That's what I expect.
I would also expect.
You know, and so what do you do? Are you, are you doing a, this is my expected number of substitutes per student and that's, and you multiply that by the total students and that's how you get your total expected substitute days? Or is it by classroom or is it by school? How are you calculating? And where's the assumption under, like, assuming, I assume that we'll, we will have one, two, one point five teachers on F M L A, whatever, you know, and all those personal leave days?
And they, yeah.
Professional development reasons?
Yeah, and the other thing is we are, you know, we think, we believe that having substitutes impacts the quality of education. So that's another thing we're, you know, we're not just looking at, I mean, we are looking at the cost and the budgeted cost, but also the impact of, you know, if we can control the impact on education. The other thing is that I did do that one Excel spreadsheet that I sent to you people, you, you know, to the, to your staff that was based on the committee work, I think, remember? I, I sent that. And so again, so that, again, making, I'm assuming that everybody was in a committee, had a substitute for a day. So again, it's another, remember that, I'll, I'll find it.
Yeah, yeah, and I think there's also something that, that we, I don't remember what formality was, but there's, there's a breakdown of actually who, like, who was on the committees and who actually had a sub.
Right.
Because not all the teachers have subs. And I, I have all that information as well.
Right, well, that's what I used to do, I, okay, I, I combined it all onto one spreadsheet and I did a, an Excel spreadsheet off of it. And so again, so you can start sort of taking your bulk number and looking at different pieces of it and, you know, getting, getting to the reasons. But yeah, you've got to take it from disparate sources, unfortunately.
What if we took like school grade days, but then two more columns that you said, sick, personal, professional? And then just went through and then you would be able to divide up, okay.
That would be helpful.
By grade level, we could see whatever the reason were, if it's low, if it's recorded in A S O P as a sick and personal reason, but on the last column it's for committee work or training or whatever they were doing. That just might, then you got it all on one sheet. And you can see out of the twelve and a half days, how many were sick and personal and how many were training.
Again, we're trying to, to establish bigger trends here. We know that the trend was a lot of substitute teachers this year. So we're trying to understand, I'm trying to understand why, you know, where, where is it coming from? You know, and this information can help, help me.
Okay, so I, I think we need to add, reformulate what we currently have, add some trends and try to answer some of those questions by a top line, some kind of top line report that kind of captures it all on one page.
Or, yeah, on one page. And a, a little bit of an analysis of what's driving some of these trends.
We're close to seven thirty, so is there, is some of those same conversations similar with other reports that we saw? Or do people have comments on particular ones that they would like to share in the next five minutes? And we can try to come back with these flushed out a little bit better.
Well, I expect the second one, similarly, you would want something to compare to, right?
Right.
The fiscal year twenty fourteen numbers compared to fiscal year twenty thirteen, at least, see a trend line.
And I'm trying to go into the May sixth, here we go. For some reason. I think it was the May finance committee had all the specifications.
Well, let's look at the ones that we have here.
I, I hear that, but let's look at what we have.
So the I E P count, I, I'm really not getting much out of this report.
The I E P is.
Just tell me how many.
This is going into the fall, this is what we're going to have in each school?
No.
That's not.
How many, how many, how many?
By grade level, by school.
That's.
Last year.
Last year.
Right, ending.
Okay. At the end of the spring, so.
We have two hundred and forty-five students district-wide that have I E Ps. That's basically, that's kind of high level summary, right?
Right, and then what would be important would be to relate it to the total number of students, right? So we would continue to see the percentage. Again, a trend line over a couple of years and I, and I think we're really, you know, the going forward trend, I think, is important to us as well. And I don't know if it's important, I don't know that we really need to know the reasons, but unless some types of I E Ps are more labor and, you know, require more resources. And I know, I don't know what that is, if that's the case or not, but.
How far do you want us to go back? Or do you just want to go forward?
Let's go back, I say one year and then let's go, let's go forward.
I, I agree.
So you have fiscal year fourteen.
So forward would, would include removing the eighth graders, right, that have moved on. And at some point, when do we, when do we know when the kindergarten is I E Ps? I mean, they're being established this summer, right?
Yeah, but I think you have to put a point in time where you do this annually and update it because you want the same data point, you want, you want to look at the same body of data, otherwise your comparisons won't be good. So if it's, if the report's delivered in, at the, what are we, July or May or July, whatever meeting we deliver this report on an annual basis, that data point has to be the same for every single year that we trend, otherwise you're not going to be.
Well, maybe we ought to think about what, what date is meaningful then.
We were thinking it was annual tied to the budget process. So that's why it came back in July. Because you can close out the year and get full data.
Well, will we, what date will we know the I E Ps count for next year? Will we know before we have to approve the budget?
We can give you a tentative.
Okay.
You know, each one, they exit and enter.
Well, right, because people in the middle of the year can enter. I mean, like if you're, all of a sudden, you're, there's a child that.
Knowing that's going to fluctuate, but at least knowing where you're starting from when you're going to the budget.
Right.
Right, just to see.
I mean, to make a hard comparison of real hard data, we have to draw a line in the sand at some point. I mean, we can use it for forecasting, but if you want to really understand, I think it has to be the same.
Sure.
Apples to apples, right.
And some of it is to understand the impact of how we're managing.
The program.
The program.
Yeah. Let's see if we're making.
And you're going to tie it to paraprofessionals probably, there's going to be some correlation, right?
Right, and that might also be a report, you know, number of parap.
Yeah, and you can also tie it to, I mean, if we increase the R T I math program, then potentially less children might enter. I don't know how we can, if we can make that jump, but. Okay, and then the last thing is to just, we went through the budget calendar already in Zach's presentation and then the proposed eight, five meeting, I just need feedback on an eight, five is a good day.
All right.
Is that a Tuesday?
It's a Tuesday.
And about how, I know this, it's hard to predict how long we'll take.
No, I have seven to eight thirty on the agenda and then if indeed, we would have to make a motion for, we would probably have to have a quick special meeting post the finance committee meeting because we'd have to make up action to okay the tentative budget to be put on the website. So you and I have to get.
Yeah, and I'm wondering what else we could shove into that special meeting, that's why I'm asking these questions.
Mine is from seven to eight thirty, or my proposal is seven to eight thirty for the finance and then a quick special meeting afterwards.
And then one vote, and one vote, and then what else can we throw in?
So if everyone could let me know, eight, five is good because I'd like to proceed in getting that on the calendar and post.
You know what, it's, it's, it's good for me.
Good for me.
Did it.
Okay, so.
You got four.
You got a quorum.
There you go.
Then I would like to make a motion to adjourn the finance committee for July fifteenth at seven thirty-two.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Lisa, thank you, Zach.